October 1st, 2018, a work session for the CIP. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Roar?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riegel?
Here.
Just teasing.[24.41][24.41](Laughter).
Okay, number two is the fifth reading of the resolution of 2050.
Yes, it seems like this has been before us for quite a bit of time here. Really, this is, I think, the only, this is the second meeting we've had regarding the CIP and what we, what I submitted to you on August 15th was out of balance. It was out of balance in really all of the years, including the proposed 2019 year. And I did that really for a couple of reasons. One was just because it underscored the mismatch that we have between the needs of our community and what our resources, the resources available to address those needs. And so as a result of knowing that you have to adopt a balanced CIP, you should be adopting a balanced CIP, I, together with staff and the finance director, was able to make some recommended changes. They're not radical, but they are, they do impact various areas of the budget and various projects. And they're summarized in a note that I sent out on September 19th. And the first, if you just turn to the first page, page three, you'll see that one of the changes is noted in my, in my cover notes, increase the amount coming from the city's general fund. And that increased that, I think it's about $135,000. That is really an increase coming from our general 1%, our tax collection. And we'll be able to get a better handle on that as we move into the 2019 budget process. But right now, that's a, that's 1% of the net 1% collections, it's 14% rather, of the net 1% collections. And so that's, that's really the only revenue change that we made. All the other changes were changes in expenditures. And really, we don't have, we really don't have a whole lot of options in terms of revenues. The income tax is really the, is the lion's share of where our CIP is funded. So, and this just for, just for illustrative purposes, at one point, the city was considering putting in place a change to our, ultimately, it could have been in our charter, that would have required 25% of our income tax be devoted to CIP. And there are some communities, Columbus is one of them, where they actually have a required percentage coming from their income tax that goes into the CIP. And ours has bounced around and obviously, to bump that up to 25% would be a huge number. It would address a lot of the, a lot of the requests that were made and that type of thing. But it would obviously take money from the general fund, from the operations.
Now, I don't think Dean could handle it if he did that.
Well, one point, I think, we, I don't know, when I, I can't remember what finance committee it was, but we had, we had looked at that at one point. So that was really the, and those changes then are, that increase, Dean, I don't recall what the inflated amount is each year going forward, just in terms of the percentage change.
Uh, I think 4%.
Yeah. So that's, that's the difference then in 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. And again, that is a number that we should be comfortable with, but ultimately, we're going to know that once we get farther into the 2019 budget process. So in terms of the other changes, they're really, they're noted, anything highlighted in the airport improvements, we were taking a look at moving the corporate parking lot back to 2021. That corporate parking lot was something that we had discussed with an entity interested in putting in a corporate hangar. Those discussions are still taking place, but there's nothing, there's something solid at this point that would indicate that we have to move ahead with that. It is a, it's desirable to have that, but right now, given our limited resources, we didn't, we didn't include it. So that's what, that's what that is. The, the other, if you just turn to page three, the other changes were really in the, I'm sorry, page four, I'm sorry. If you turn to page four, you'll see that we had to zero out a number of the T-hanger expansion projects, which were prior to this, were showed large expenditures and were grant-funded. And Bill, did you have any comment? I mean, I wasn't really much on that. It was just reflecting a reduced contribution from the city for those projects. So that's really what that, what we were doing there. And ditto on the Apron A expansion project previously listed for 2021, that was zeroed out as well. It appears in the 2021 column. And again, those changes are reflected in the narrative at the bottom of each of those pages. So that was the airport improvement part. Page nine was reducing the point allocation. We're still a considerable number of years out on that project in terms of dollars from the city, in terms of our local obligation. It's still a considerable amount of money. And, but we are, we are receiving the JED revenues, we are receiving the NCA dollars. Those JED revenues could change because of what is proposed out there. And Bill, did you want to mention anything about your recent Morpsy meeting in terms of the point funding at all?
Um, really, just that we, it's really down to like, really down to, I don't want to go into detail about, you know, we're just, the point project is still there. We continue to, every avenue we have, applications and funding, there's something else close gap on project.
But we're out far enough in the, you know, we're, the project probably isn't going to, you're estimating, Bill, 2020?
No, 2022, we're meeting with Track Ford next week, give us an update of where the project is, show them our funding, show them the gap in funding that we have covered local boxes. Kind of set the stage for hopefully next year to put Track application and bump up that Track fund from 1.5 million maybe to 3.5 million.
We still continue to, just, you know, talk to the county. We have our request to them. I saw Chris Bowserman two weeks ago and indicated to him that we're, we're still interested, obviously, in their participation on that project. We started with a number that we thought was reasonable, and we still think it's, it makes sense for the county to participate. So that isn't, that still is not off the table.
Just with where we stand, and a few pages back is the actual Point Railroad Bridge. So it's the landscape schedule.
What page, Dean, is that?
I don't have the page number thing that council got. It's after, you know, probably a few pages back.
This one?
Yeah.
How come you don't get page numbers, buddy?
No, must not be on the good list. But we had been looking at, out in, if you go out the year 2024, up at the top, you see a revenue bond issue proceeds. And in 2024, it's 4.25 million. It's closer to 6 million. That's basically what we've kind of referred to as the unfunded portion of this, what, based on all the estimates, including construction costs, where we think we're at right now, at the end with, with the grants that we know of. Now, as Bill said, he's still trying to pursue others. But if things play out exactly as, based on what we know today, we don't get any more grants or any more funding from any other sources, and the construction costs are pretty close to what he's estimated, then we'll end up being, funding 4.2 million of it. We do have the revenue coming from the JED and the outlet center down there, about 160,000 a year, and that's where that 200,000 number comes in. That with the 160 gets us close to what the debt service on that 4.25 million would be. So until we've identified a different revenue source, we're going to build into our plan the fact that we're going to be committing, you know, a certain amount. Right now, it's at 200,000. We were able to drop it down a little bit.
So that's what the, the changes for the point project. We also cut back bridge improvement projects, previously 50,000 per year, that's changed to 200,000 in 2022. That was, again, as opposed to a small amount in each of those four years, we looked at a larger allocation. Bill, on that separate, did you want to just elaborate on that at all?
Well, just like Tom said, we can't be much of 50,000 dollars in structure anymore. So does make sense to roll that out, try to find out a bigger.
Yeah. And we are still evaluating the peers for the Springfield brand project. That's coming out of some professional service dollars this year. That will identify really what we need to do with those peers. We might wrap them, not sure. There might be some methods out there to shore those up. Right now, it's, it's not as much of a structural thing, it's just you have some spalling that's occurring on those peers themselves. So that's got to be, that will be coming back. Bill, when do you think you'll have that report back?
I'll give you the answer back to that. I'm not sure of status of that.
Okay. Grant projects, page 13, again, the West William, the East William Street project, that's just a revised number, which Bill received from, from Morpsy.
Yeah, I just, that's, that's close about our whole way we've been with Morpsy, which is a limitation, but with the amount of revenue, that's what focused in the bank's speed, we're able to roll that entire mountain towards that one project.
And that'll be, that'll be starting next year. So that East William Street project is a, you know, it's going to be a huge improvement to that, to that quarter. Park improvement projects, 21, we're just asking Ted to try to work within his operating budget to get those roof repairs done. And that's really, we just weren't able to bite off as much as he had recommended. I think Ted was recommending metal roofs, we're talking about doing something that's just less costly, probably typical, but just reshingling your own roof at home as opposed to spending what we were planning to spend there. So that's what was reflected on page 21. Page 25, which I did not have in my book, but I hopefully all of you have in your book, and if you don't, I have them here, was just a changing two of our pieces of equipment, moving those back. Actually, moving a single axle dump truck back, and then taking the skid steer and asphalt hot box and moving those to 2022.
Sorry, I think it was 2000, 2020.
2020, I'm sorry. Yeah. So that's what the Equipment Replacement Fund project is all about. And then in, on page 32, the fire suppression system in public works, it's just self, it's identified there what we're planning to do. It was looking at $40,000 over a, over a three-year period, instead of doing it all, consolidating it as opposed to doing it in three separate years. And then that pushed that back to $120,000 in 2021. And then lastly, park impact fees, we just, Ted was overloaded in terms of the number of trail projects we were trying to do with that, with, with our park impact fee funds on page 38. And we had to move, we had to move those around, which we did. And we will be coming back to you hopefully in the first quarter of 2019 with a better idea of what grants we're going to be applying for that will help offset some of these projects. I know that if some of you have been able to go to the focus on the future workshops, some of the comments coming up are trying to get a better connection of, you know, trail connectivity around the city. And so, you know, we're going to maximize the amount of grant funds that we're able to do. We just can't tie up all of our impact fee funds for just trail projects. That's just, it's not, it's not an appropriate use of those impact fee dollars. We have identified some dollars for parkland acquisition in the southeast part of the city. And that's, that's really, that merits a bigger discussion at some point with city council about where that parkland might be, what might be included in that, and whether there should be any consideration. We still own 70 acres of land, Armstrong property that we bought, it was a protective purchase we bought back in the mid-2000s that we no longer need for, for the utility department. We thought at one point we might need that for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. We don't need it. And so there is, there has been some conversation with Ted and his staff about would that be an appropriate use of that property? If it would, you'd still, there'd still be a land price involved. But we're also looking at what would, what happens if some, not Salmo Parkway, Glen Parkway extends north of Berlin Station Road. So that's a, that is something that we're going to have to address. If you just drive down to the southeast, I don't know how many can pin down that pavement, but it's, it's another big part of the city. I mean, it's, and there's no, there is, there are, there's parkland down there, but we don't have a, we don't have a community park. And sometimes you say you have to have one, but I think you take a look at the different areas of the city where we have them, it would probably be an appropriate use of, of impact fee dollars to do that.
If the developers are putting them in, then we don't have to maintain them. We need to think about that.
Well, I think what, what the developers are doing is they're, they're building, they're trying to build more of the neighborhood parks, which were, but it, we're talking about it, something that would be just larger in scale, that is inappropriate, we can't use impact fee dollars for that.
Yes, I can see that.
Chris, you mean in terms of the size or just?
No, where it's at, I mean, it's birthing North City there. I mean, it's a bridge to the county right off of.
Oh, you mean in Armstrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I just threw that out there because we own the land, it's, it's really at the northern end of that southeast area. Ideally, it would be somewhere along Glen Parkway. And, you know, that's, we all, we all know that land is, that land is getting expensive. So you can't see it that far north, Chris?
I don't see it.
Yeah. And did you want to comment on that at all?
It is, it is the very north end of that southeast section. So ideally, it would be nice to be in, I just don't see which residents would be, would use that.
Right. Well, at this point, as, as the city grows and that area fills in, I mean, down the road, it's like right now, it's not a, you know, something we have to do tomorrow, but we're just trying to plan down the road as that area infills and more residents go in there. We are, we are seeing some pressures of some recreational amenities in that area, and more than just the neighborhood parks, more of a community park where there's athletic fields. But also, we want to explore the avenues where we work with the Old Age Youth Association because they're more in that area where maybe there's some partnership opportunities where we can work with them to develop more of a community park and meet those recreation needs out there.
Problem you're going to have is, is we're way behind the curve, that land prices are so, and they're building those houses. And even if we had a developer give us 60 acres, the neighbors aren't going to want a community park in the middle of their residential area. So, you know, that's always a tough thing, siding a bald, a park that has lights or active vehicles going there. So, you know, we've, I know Ted's been scouring that whole area, looking at what might be something, but we, you know, if not, and this may be too far north, but you really got to go east to find anything that you probably could even have a chance at buying for some reasonable price and, and not, not be in the middle of where they're building houses because, you know, you deal with that too with the neighbors.
Kind of like what we have on the west side. We have a nice park, we have a community center, we have a splash pad, we have active passive recreation over there, but we just don't have. Anyway, that's in there. It's a, it's something that we have to address at some point. And impact fees are an appropriate use, that's expanding capacity. So it's a.
And then, and just one other thing, I know with what the mayor said about the developers, what, what they're doing is, is neighborhood parks, and we distinguish that resource comes from our exaction policy, which is different from the impact fees. The impact fees can only be utilized for community parks, not, you know, the neighborhood parks that you see the developers building. There's a, you know, kind of a gray area distinction between the two, but generally, a community park is one where you're going to have parking lots and people are going to drive there. The neighborhood park being one that's part of a neighborhood and it's more walkable. We got it, we got to keep the two separate from the funding source.
Speaking of parks, while we're on this subject, the Boardman Park site has come up a couple of times. And I know that, I just want to throw that out there. I, at one point, the schools had talked to us about, about whether we would be interested in that. And I, no, I'm not. It's curious what, if there's any sentiment on council about that. It's being, right now, they're programming it, every weekend, there's something else going on there. But ultimately, the schools, I think, have looked to us for some.
I think that discussion might be coming up this.
Yeah, apparently, what they wanted, like, to talk about that at our joint meeting at some point. So I just wanted to get our thoughts on it. But at some point, it's, it will, it will come up.
What are you talking about, George?
More formally. What do you think, George?
Yeah.
We'd be a sucker to take that up. I mean, we have blue limestone, we don't need it. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's an albatross with Delaware run underneath it. Yeah. Yeah, just say no.
All right. So we should maintain them.
Exactly. Or they can buy it. The northwest wants it so badly.
Or they can donate it to us, and then we can.
So, anyway, that really is, that's kind of an overview. We're in balance, which is, which is good. As you know, this is just a plan, the appropriation for 2019 doesn't, it occurs as part of the budget. So we'll have to, we'll have to consider that when we adopt the budget. But it still doesn't address, really, the access Delaware initiative. It doesn't address fundamentally what we need to do with our roads. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the pavement condition index report that Bill and his staff put together, just looking at the numbers in terms of the annual amounts Bill was recommending for maintenance in, in local roads.
Is it 3 million? 3 million? Is that what it was? 3 million a year?
Three, yeah, 301 to 400, yeah.
And we have $150,000 obviously going to local roads here for just for resurfacing. Obviously, we, we're, it's not the difference between 150 and 30 million, but it's a, it's a fairly large gap.
About 1.1 million per year, including grant funding, that's a different really, those two numbers, this is something important.
Something we all know. And we have talked about perhaps getting together separately to figure out where we want to go because we're kind of, we're kind of stuck.
Nobody looks at worse. Wow? Why are you sitting here?[1402.75][1402.75](Laughter).
He's on the new section of Sandusky. Anyway, that's a, not really is what gets, it's kind of masked here, is that, the road issue. We do have funding in here for the project next door, which would allow us to move ahead with that. That's, that's all contemplated, it's in here. Technology improvements are in here. There's a, an initiative underway, I think you're aware of it, to do an enterprise resource planning project for the city, which would ultimately replace our, our financial services software that we have. And it's a, it's kind of a comprehensive look at how we do things, ultimately allowing us to automate payroll, more so than it's automated now. It's automated, but it would probably.
Need no more time stamps?
Kind of go to the next.
No more little cards?
Well, we might still have the card system, is a, is a, you know, check system now. I don't know. But anyway, that's, that's, that's all contemplated here, so. So that's what we have, and I would welcome any questions, comments. It's consideration for the fifth reading is.
Maybe sixth reading, Monday night.
Sixth reading.
This is five tonight.
Can I get some feedback on the process?
Sure.
So this is the strangest CIP that I've ever been a part of. We got the CIP in August, went through and marked up my pages with my post-it notes and wrote down some questions that I had, and wow, it's out of balance. So the Lisa Keller ver, Lisa Keller version is this. And then I come to a meeting, and they say, well, no, never mind, after we hear from all the directors, this isn't the actual CIP, we're revising it, give this to me, I'll give you a new one. Take off my post-it notes, give it back. Then we get this version, and we have a week and a half until this meeting. It just sort of feels like I'm a observer of this process and not a participant this year.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with you. I don't, I think there's a combination of variables, one of which was time, not on my end, not so much in director's end, but really more on my end, just not being able to, to spend as much time on it, to have either presented to you in a balanced fashion or kind of mapped out a better process for review. So I'm not, it's, you know, it was nothing I was happy about at all. I had a knowledge that, you know, we could have done some things differently. I, and so that spending, that last meeting we had where, where we kind of took these back from you, I, it was, it just happened, I, it probably happened too quickly, and I took a lot of thought, and so I would commit that the process going forward would be, would be better and allow for not just a perfunctory, you know, review of this thing. But I would say, if you have questions regarding projects and other things that are still valid, then let's, let's talk about those. If they're still, this is not my, this is my presentation to you, and I want you to feel as though you're participating in it and that you're part of that process. And so I really, I kind of rely on council to provide that feedback. But you're, the process, you're right, did not, in my opinion, was not as conducive as it has been in the past. So I, I mean, that, was there anything, Lisa, that you?
Just the, so I keep looking at this 150,000 for local street resurfacing, and we know that it's, any amount that I'm trying to find is so miniscule that it's like, why am I bothering here with? Like, one of the things that stood out to me is 87,500 in sidewalk maintenance. We're spending half as much on our sidewalks as we are on all of our roads. But when I actually break down that number, a lot of it's already committed, things we've done in the past, and I can't really find a lot of money there. But I don't know if anyone else is kind of going through here and trying desperately to find or divert or go to austerity budgeting to find a source of funding for local roads. I cannot find it. I cannot find it. And I'm trying so hard to go through and, you know, anything that's unnecessary, can we divert? But how do we get from 150,000 to 3 million? If we stopped everything that is, you know, optional, we can't get there.
And that kind of gets the question of, and it's been obviously a policy decision for years that we're going to underfund roads, that, that roads were not important enough because, you know, until they totally fail, until they become slack road, it's still okay. And, and, you know, it's just one of those things you continue to put off. Leaky, you know, leaky roof, you have a bucket. And after a while, that dripping gets old. But roads, you know, okay, add some more hot patch in there and drive on them, and, you know, it's, it's not as noticeable until it is. And obviously, we've kicked that can down the road long enough that it's very noticeable, and it's only going. and it's only going to increase every year. And I'm with you, Lisa, there, I mean, yeah, look at this, there's, there's really no place we could take, take money from. I mean, we could do something. We could say, okay, we're not putting any money into Gazetteville, boom, all that money. Yeah, we're not going to put any money in the airport. Boom, take all that money. Of course, then the opportunity cost is lose any of those matching funds and those grant months, but at some point in time, I think we have to look at that. My question was one of, and just a point of clarification, um, impact fee monies, are we allowed to sit on those indefinitely before we use those? Because TIF monies, you have to use, what, like, five years or something like that? Is that the same with impact fee monies?
Different, different. I mean, TIF is governed by state law, impact fees are governed by us, but we, we do have to demonstrate that we're using those.
They are governed by the legislation you adopted creating them and I'd have to do an annual report to council where I track expenditures and after five years, if they're not being utilized, they have to be re, refunded back, um, because we built things in advance and borrowed money to do things that are able to be paid for with impact fees. We're ahead of the curve in most of those, but I do have to monitor that. And yes, if we sat on those after five years, I literally have to track it by year, so all the, all the impact fee money we collected this year, if it's not expended by 2023, then I'm, I'm obligated to refund it back. So you got basically a five-year window.
Okay. Because that's what I, I think, I mean, to me, I was thinking about this earlier, that's kind of part of our, I think that's part of our doing, because we've set up these funding mechanisms and we, and we have this money and then we have to use it.
Right.
And it's like, oh, we have all this money and, you know, we're gonna build this bypass because we have the monies, you know, it's impact fees.
But development is.
And then, yeah, and then, and then we have to maintain it. And that, that's how we just nickel and dime, or chisel ourselves into a giant hole because we spend this money that we supposedly have somehow.
Then we have to take care of it.
And then we have to take care of it. And, and, you know, it would be great if we could accrue, let's say, impact fee monies for a longer period of time and then do them all at once, because it's kind of incremental, we have to use it within five years, we do all these little projects and then we don't see it. Imagine if we could accrue all that, the, the park impact fee monies and then for a period of time, until you build the, you know, maybe the super duper two out on the side in the southeast quadrant, you know, whatever that is. But we don't have that ability today. So then we spend it here and we spend it there and it's just like a whole budget. If you don't keep track of the pennies, all of a sudden, you're out of whack by dollars. And, and I think that's, that's kind of where I see that we are. So whatever we're going to do, we need to do something with our funding for roads. And we can either do a true austerity and just say, sorry if it's not personnel, if it's not, you know, critical services, if it's not this, we're not funding it. And that, but then we'll get all backlash and rightly so, from citizens that, you know, why didn't you turn on the splash pack this year? You know, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? Well, we're saving that money so we can do this, because you said roads are a priority. You know, I, I.
You know, the only thought I have with going down Lisa's route is, you know, can, I mean, if you look at the, the equipment replacement fund, you know, that's $650,000. Can we, can we, do, do we need all this stuff? Can we go 12 more months without pickup truck, uh, park mowers, bucket truck, uh, three police cruisers? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just spitballing, you know? It's a lot of money, you know? Can we go 12 more months without all that stuff?
And then what would happen if?
Well, then you're just, yeah.
Putting it off the top.
And that's.
I'm good. It's only 12 months.
And then next year, though, it's.
It's even bigger.
Then it's even bigger.
I went through this with Phil last year, because we deferred, we got the same jam last year, we deferred a, a truck and I guess the question at some point is, I mean, if you, if you are confident that we're replacing our equipment in the replacement cycles, then to defer, it just means you're just putting it off. If you think we can drive police cruisers for, you know, 18 more months or 12 more months, that's a different story, but I think I, I'm reasonably confident that the life cycle costing that we do in here is, is accurate. So, yes, you could, Chris, but it's just.
I'm just talking out loud.
But no, you're right, we did this, we did this last year with one of the large tandem axle, well, the single axle dump truck. We pushed it back, we just pushed it back. So, the hard part is that you don't wanna be held hostage to what is a problem, what is an issue in our city, which is our roads. And, you know, there's so many other things we're doing besides that. I don't know, it's a.
Well, I mean, if it goes back to the, to the voters again and it fails again, then you're gonna have to figure it out, you know?
Or we just keep going back.
The thing that's crazy to me, though, is, so we say we cannot pave the roads that we have, this is a critical problem, it's our biggest issue in the city, but then I can't look out my door, left, right, frontwards and see more roads.
See the developer putting in more roads because we won't say no to the developer.
It just seems, ugh.
Oh, that's a vicious.
It's a huge, that, I mean, it's a vicious cycle, it's not paying for itself.
There's a.
Clearly not.
Right.
If you look at it broadly from, from, from perspectives of, of where that level of funding and what that level of service needs to be, I've been here long enough to know, as I've seen cycles go through and what's happened, you know, roads 25 years ago that were gonna be falling apart and, and different things, before we had an equipment replacement, uh, program like this with equipment and the bulk of it's used for plowing snow and mowing grass and all these things that are driven by some of the issues you're talking about. And back then, we used to get ODOT surplus pickup trucks that had the floorboard falling out of it. And, you know, again, we've got to have that balance. I remember over the years talking to, well, Tim Browning, when he was in Public Works, doesn't do us any good to budget a bunch of money for a crack seal material if we don't have the equipment or the manpower to put it down. So you gotta have that balance. And when you look at development, is there a way to look at that and say, what are they contributing, uh, towards this notion that if, of the, of the revenues that we generate from, uh, people, um, you know, you could probably isolate an amount and say, we need 30% of it in general to go towards maintaining streets, a certain amount for police and all those sort of things, and, and look at that and say, are we doing that? Are we continuing to add to the resource that we're allocating towards roads as we have these developments? Because theoretically, we are doing development and there's more people moving in and they're paying taxes. If you're out of whack and you always were, that there never was a revenue stream sufficient to pay for the road, uh, level of service that you've wanted, and if we haven't adjusted that, then you're, you're never going to. But I think a lot of it gets back to the level of service, because I think we have road issues out there. But we had road issues out there 20 years ago and it came here. Are they, um, greatly different? I don't think so. I think if you talk to people over the years, they'd say, we have road issues then, we have road issues now. Are they getting worse? Perhaps is the growth making it worse? You, we, we tend to look just at the expense side, we've got more roads to maintain, but yet, you know, we have these developers in here telling us, gee, you know, approve our apartments, look how much money you're gonna generate. And they do. Uh, we've done some analysis to say what type of development generates what sort of funding. Uh, you know, it could be that the new developments helping us catch up. And I do know that was the case several years ago, because we were trying to catch up for years, they didn't address any of the issues. I mean, before, we had a fire EMS tax and all that sort of stuff. And so we're trying to catch up and grow at the same time. But fundamentally, we gotta get our hands around what is that level of service? And right now, we're providing adequate roads and you can get around. You know, to get to a higher level, probably gonna need a different source or fundamentally change, but, and that's the problem, quite frankly, over the years, as we've talked about how we even talk about capital planning, how do we show that? Because one of the things, I know Tom had mentioned, you know, the format, the way it played out after it went to council, I don't think it was all that good, but part of there was some discussions behind the scene about, you know, we do this every year, if we, you know, well, last year, we adopted a capital plan that was out of, way out of balance. Um, and, um, so the intent, thought a little bit was to present some of these issues, because we're not down to cutting, you know, once and things like that, so that council could see what is getting taken out to, 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 to balance, uh, the capital plan. I think we all know you kind of see that, because you've been around long enough to see some of those things, but those challenges do get to be difficult. Uh, what becomes the prioritization when you've gotta cut things back? Um, and, uh, again, moving forward, though, it's, if, if it's not, and this is the thing that's, and I talked to Tom about that again today, we've, as long as I've been here, we've been talking about getting a, an additional road, a dedicated road, uh, resource. And it's always been, well, when we pass, if and when, you know? I don't know, maybe that doesn't occur. And I think if that is some degree of a conclusion, either because the voters don't approve it or, you know, then we, we probably do have to change the way we, we operate a little bit and, and, and find a way to focus maybe a little bit more resource in there, but, you know, it, it may come into play when you do talk about development and it may be more important to say, um, yes, you know, Department of Commerce, it's great, but we, we can't do a TIF, because that's taking money away from the city that otherwise could go to road improvements, it's gonna have to fund its, itself, um, or those sort of things.
It's a dilemma, Lisa. And that's really what we, that's part of that discussion that we're, we could have tonight or have on the first work session in November, which is Access Delaware. We're, we're at a point now where we've gotta make some decisions about that. I don't know what, what people think, but I do know that, I think, when you say you look outside and you see the growth, you can also, I think, if you've attended any of the Focus on the Future workshops, and I think you were at the one on Thursday night, I think, not universally, but generally, people, I think, feel, you've got a situation in the city where I think the growth has been positive for us, on balance. We're a more vibrant community than we would be, I think, um, had you not been adding what you've been adding. The hard challenge is just, you know, not having those resources and that's what, you know, that's the classic.
You know, it's, it's interesting.
That's guys, we wouldn't, that's like, I think, when we, why we, why you decided in 2016 that we needed to do something about it? We just never, we never went right back and.
It's just so tricky now, Tom, because there've been so many things that have increased people's tax burdens between when we decided that then and now.
Revaluations.
Revaluations. School levy.
Right.
Big things that have.
Right. So maybe the, maybe this thing is, is, Jim, with some of the feedback is, is keep it temporary. We're gonna do, we're gonna do a dedicated amount of, of improvements, gonna be for a limited period of time. If the voters think that we did it and we did it right, then they'll, they'll renew it. But don't do something that's open.
And should we stick to only critical level and not?
Not expansion.
Not expansion products?
Right.
Just, just absolute critical list of.
Yeah. Your maintenance, your current roads. Your maintenance, maintain what you have first and, and if you have available dollars to, to, to your expansion projects, but.
Well, there's a trade-off to that, too, because if we don't add some of these expansion roads where we need them, we, we're still doubtful enough on a lot of these other roads and so we're gonna have more maintenance. See what I'm saying? For congestion and maintenance, if we don't build these other infrastructures that we need over time, we're keeping all that traffic on 36, 37.
Right.
Traffic on Central, you know? So it's, I, to me, it's simple math, there's, there's no money in here that we're gonna find to come up with. We have to have some on the revenue stream, you know? Certainly, economic development, we land a couple really big businesses, that'll help. I don't know if we can do something, some sort of impact fee or something that relates, luggage impact fee that would go towards street maintenance, I don't know if that's a legal possibility, but ultimately, I think we've gotta go back to the voters and say, we just don't have the money to do the road things. If you want it done, it's gotta be paid for somehow. I think, in my opinion, what Powell did with this independent study has some merit, I think, and I'd like to kind of wait to see what happens with that, but instead of city councils and the city council, we need this, if you've got this independent group that goes out and, you know, the right experts on it, can come back and say, here's what your needs are. You know, I'm not saying that Bill's estimates aren't right, he's been doing this for a lot of time, I'm sure they are, but comes, coming from an independent group to say, here's what your needs are, this is what it's gonna cost to do it.
There's a, um, there's softwares who write, um, software developers who write programs. Um, Citizen Budget was one of them that we learned about when we went to the National League of Cities Conference, where the finance director works with the software company to input all of this information. And then it gets put out to the public.
Like a dashboard.
And they kind of monkey around with the numbers and if they try to move something from a fund, an impact fee fund, and they try to move it to roads, it's gonna pop up and say, you can't, because Ohio law says you have to keep this here. And the value of the, the exercise is they see and go through what we've all just gone through in a very simplified, easy-to-access format that can go out electronically to any citizen who wants to try to do this. So that all the people who are commenting on these Facebook pages, we can send them the link and say, we would love your feedback on what we can do to improve this capital improvement process. Here's the link, complete the exercise and send me what you have. And I know that it doesn't cost a ton of money to do that, but that just may be the type of outreach that we need, because we are sitting here doing this, but we're only seven people. And what we did last time didn't work to convince the public, this is the gap, where do we find it? We need a bypass. Okay, let's put that in as an option. Let's build a bypass. It's 54 million, whatever it is.
500 million.
500 million. Where do we get 500 million? Okay, I'm gonna cut sidewalks by $5,000, okay? I'm gonna skip the dump truck and we still have 490 million to go. But maybe it would help. Yes.
Those are the things, and we've talked about this, Tom saw a couple videos that Gahan is using. The message isn't going to happen just by having community meetings. I mean, we, we've done and put a lot of effort into it, it needs to be something like that, because I think people, one of the other dynamics I've seen over time is, is 25, 30 years ago, the condition of the roads then, I don't know that they're worse now, but that was okay, that's what people had, then, most of the people lived here. We knew and we, we were even talking back then, once we get more people moving into the community, they're gonna have a higher expectation, they'll support what it takes to have the, the level of service they have in Westerville and Dublin and Worthington, uh, because their tax rates are different, but we can communicate that in a number of different ways, I don't think people can wrap their hands around it. The city of Westerville has a higher tax rate, they have a higher tax base, it's because of where they're at, and they don't use any of that tax money for fire EMS. We use seven tenths of our 1.85 rate. Uh, the numbers are pretty straightforward, but that in and of itself isn't going to convince anybody. It, you know, something like what you're talking about, there's some other more public relations type of things that aren't necessarily said, here, support this levy, it's like, like you said, you know, here's the challenge. It might, without having to, you know, somebody's not gonna listen to what you say, but when they see it themselves, maybe a little bit, maybe it's not quite so easy to, to just find the money there somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, no, there's.
Because we have some real public, um, critics saying, oh, simple, like, put me in there and I'll figure it out. I'd love to say, can't wait to see what you come up with, here it is.
Right. Citizen budget process.
And maybe someone out there will be brilliant and find something we're not seeing. But it's the value of having a whole bunch more eyes on the same thing.
Yeah, it gets more civic, more engaged. You're engaging the public in a constructive way, I think.
Rather than just talk, I mean, we can't, this is a really difficult.
Yeah.
Thing and we see that we don't have a full room. Thank you for joining us. We don't have a, a full room of citizens really engaged in this process, so how do we engage our citizens in a way that they can do it from home? I'd love to see.
I'd say every, every other vendor at the conference, I just got typed on every other, but I'd say a third of the vendors were about civic engagement. Here's my, here's my software, the tool that you're gonna use to have your, your citizens help you with the budget process, help you with the CIP process, and if that's something that, I think that can be helpful, that can be helpful, so.
We saw quite a few when we were in Texas.
Yeah.
I'll come back with a recommendation on it.
We're doing all this citizen engagement anyway, we might as well really get people into the mid-grade.
Yeah.
And then maybe that will forward this a little bit more.
Do you think, uh, to, can, I don't know if you've had a chance looking at what Powell did, but that was the, the hire, the deployment committee, but what you're saying, Lisa, is just let the public have a better understanding of how we budget, what the choices are and give it to them.
But I think the ones we saw in Texas, that, you know, this is how much it costs to do this much road. And you have to put it in their minds that, okay, it can take 300,000, but that's not gonna buy you very much. They have to understand how much everything costs, too, and we can't inflate it, they have to be honest about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I was, uh, my motorcycle class, I taught this weekend down in Hilltop, there was a couple that lives over off Hough Road.
was a couple that lives over off Hough Road, North Hough Road, and, uh, they've lived in Delaware for, I think, two years. And they were commenting how they, they really wanted to live in Columbus, and they were looking at places in Columbus, but they had much, they found a much better housing value here in Delaware, which is why then they elected to, to reside here. And, uh, we were talking, uh, you know, about taxes and what have you, and, and they were not so concerned, um, about our property, or, or, uh, income, or income tax levels, but they were really concerned about the property tax, you know? So it's like, yeah, but that's really not, you know, city money, you know, that's really schools. And, and they're thinking, you know, our taxes have gone up every year since we've moved here, you know, they've gone up, and they, you know, and to speak to your point, you know, people are just saying, you know, I'm taxed today. And, but at the same point in time, then we had, out there on West Broad, you know, we had a couple of the, the big EMS trucks like what we have, you know, and I was telling them, it's like, you know, how much you think that thing costs? You know? A little bit over 300,000. People, what? That costs that much? You know, and then people just don't have a clue as to what things cost. You know, they're thinking that, you know, uh, things are just much less expensive in that if you're paying more than, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for, for an ambulance, well, then it must be gold-plated, you know, or whatever it is. And that's where that ongoing education, and I think, and I don't know how we get it out, I mean, I think a vehicle like that would, would be good, but it's still only going to get 2% or 3% of our residents. Now, maybe it's most local residents, or maybe it isn't, I don't know. You know, but we do the outreach and people don't show up. You know, we do, we do all these various things, and I just don't know how, I don't know what that golden ticket is that gets, that we're able to really engage our citizens.
I feel like if we were able to reach the ones that do show up, those are going to be our, our communicators out in the community. These are people who are engaged. When I went to the Focus on the Future meeting, I was really surprised how many people were there. I expected to walk in and there would be no one there.
Right.
And there were tables and tables of people, I've lived in the city 30 years, I've lived in the city two years, all different sorts of people. Those people could be our mouthpieces for their individual neighborhoods.
Yeah.
It would expand, it would be a force multiplier for us to help get the word out.
And that's kind of what the citizens can, intended to do, you know, get people to get some education on, on behind the scenes and what it costs and, and, you know, and become our missionary salespeople out there.
And not just to pass a levy, but just for citizen engagement in general. This isn't a bad idea to, to do this, even if we didn't have a need. But considering the fact that we do have a need, I think it's something we should really look seriously into incorporating.
Well, I think that tool that we're talking about is definitely a powerful thing. I, I, the only thing that I think in addition to that, we still, we can't expect citizens are going to go use that tool and come to their own conclusion when we need to make up that study. But at some point, we have to craft the message and get it out in the right way.
Right.
And that's where I think having an independent study done gives some credibility to the message as opposed to just us saying, you know? But having that, a tool where citizens can go in, play with the budget, well, both the ones that are always telling us, now, we shouldn't be spending money, that would be great to say, you know what, go on the website and figure it out, because there, it's always easy to say, you should have been spending money on this and not on that, if you don't really know the realities of what those numbers are.
Yes. And I think that the system's even allowing you some options. Um, you don't have enough to do what you crafted here. So option A is go to this income tax. Option B is.
Cut this.
Pick up the trash once a month, you know, different, not that that would help in this case, but you get the, the point of what I'm saying. And then they say, well, I'm not willing to do that, or I'm not willing to cut the police force in half, or I'm not, I don't want to do that. They would see the realities of what we're dealing with here.
It's making, it's helping your residents to become better informed in terms of the choices.
Because it's easy to say, build a bypass.
Yeah. And Bill and I, yeah, we were talking about that earlier today, the same, yeah. And, uh, but I think also council, your social media platforms can help with that, too, if, in terms of being able to ask those questions. We're actually test, um, we're doing a pilot test of a civic engagement platform called Polco, P-O-L-C-O, I think I linked you to it months, months ago, we got a fairly good price for it for the rent balance of this year and in 2019, where you can pose questions to the community. Different than Facebook, you're able to, um, analyze the information coming back, where it's coming from, if these are people who live in your city, and it's, it's a more constructive way of trying to get citizen feedback on things. So it's along those lines, but I think you could link, you can pose some of those questions you just had. City Council just adopted a capital improvement program, these are the choices, but we can pose those questions and get that feedback. But what you're talking about, Lisa, is an actual budget tool, where they actually, they're seeing the, the charts of what we have and what we spend money on, and, um, so I'll, I'll find out.
One that sticks out is Citizen Budget.
That's the one, I think, there's a, I think you had mentioned it, it's Canadian, I don't, I can't recall what the name of the vendor was.
They offered to do a demo for us, too, of how it works.
But, yeah, they're, they're out there now, it's just a matter of, you know, moving ahead and try to do it. That doesn't make our choices any easier, but I think it helps convey. So do you still, so we have a work session, tentatively scheduled. We have a first Monday in November, which is the, which is the consequential, so I think it's the Monday, the Monday before.
To do what? To overlap?
Well, we talked about when Marie Keister presented her Access Delaware, it was, she did all of the presentation, it was a public meeting, it was hard to get any kind of discussion, and it was, well, we should, we should probably think about having a work session devoted to this, and then Jim had mentioned it previously. So it's really to try to get some direction, I guess. Pardon? Well, I'm just saying, that's the next, if you were to do a, a Monday, but again, that's the eve of, um, of the, isn't there election?
Election, okay. Mid-term elections. Yeah. So that was every, every first Tuesday after a Monday.
So I, I just throw it out there, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but it is something that we need to have some.
We, I mean, we, we need to do something with it, so I, I think we've got it on the books already, um, we're going to bash it out and get it done. Because I, I, I look at it, we need to put something on the ballot for the spring. That's how I've got it.
It just, if, on Jim's point, if you were to do something in the spring, uh, you'd have to, you'd have to settle on it by February.
Yeah.
Which is, spring would be.
I don't know that I agree with that, but it's like 30 days we've talked about that. Sorry. I don't know that I agree with putting something on the ballot in the spring, but I believe you should have a little, because you've talked about what future plans are.
Let's start there. Any other comments about tonight's CIP, questions or anything? Okay. So we're going to executive session?
I don't, I'm sorry, no, I didn't have anything. Just down there.
Okay, can we, are we finished then? Because we have, I have Germans to pick up.
Yes. I look for motion to adjourn.
I mean, if we're gonna keep talking, that's cool, but if we're just.
I'll read your.